All right, let him get to it.
It's always interesting to see what pops up on the radar.
Yeah.
This ballgame.
Yeah.
I might have partially answered this thing. I got the numbers one through ten right.
Do you all see that? That one will not work.
I had a big cast in there. It's my belt. It's a green space field that they've planned. And today's school started that cast. It was the day somebody came up, fucked their dog. Put it in there. And let it run around and play.
Jason, this is like the, it's like all of the old Splosh.
This is all new Splosh stuff.
I'm really trying to work with you.
You ready, Jason? While Jason's getting ready, I'd like to call this meeting order. Welcome to the Monday, July twenty first, twenty twenty five call meeting. It's four, four thirty three. Can I get a approval of the agenda, please?
Second.
Second, on favor, I, Mr. Rizner, once you're ready, we'll turn it over to you. You can correct us on the proper way to fill this out.
All right.
Because obviously I wasn't following directions over here today.
All right, so what we've, what we've got here is the same list of projects from before. Went back to the departments, had them give us their priorities. So, you know, building maintenance, one, building maintenance, students, so forth. And so that's, that's all reflected here now. I think, my thought about how to prioritize this was maybe to identify your top ten, give ten points to your very favorite project, nine to the next favorite, eight to the next favorite, and so down to one. And so, Commissioner Kitchin, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you had an idea about combining some of these projects into one. And then instead of doing the project outright, doing a borrowing to fund those. And so it might be helpful if we just add, if we add another project to the list. It's a combination of those items. Does that suit you if we just, so I could, and it's, do you want to take us through what your thought was?
Yeah, do you have it on? Do you have mine up there? If you can pull it up. So, so the first thing I did though was, I think we had all agreed, based on the meeting with the city and with our last meeting, that the development authority, the five million needed for that would come out of the excess Splosh for this year. And then the courthouse project would be moved to a level one project. So that comes off the top before we do the split, right? So I kind of took those out of to say yes to this Splosh because we already had them identified as A project, B how to fund them. And so I didn't have that. I didn't have the courthouse or the development authority project as my one through ten priorities. So I started my ten as number three, really.
Just out of curiosity, where are we with the update? Because this estimated cost is definitely not the current cost, right?
On courthouse.
Courthouse.
Oh. So on courthouse, we're, we're going back through, we're updating the space needs study that was done back before COVID, really. And so we're, we don't have a number, just yet. It's kind of the short answer.
Yep.
The pre-COVID number was between ten and twelve million.
Mm-hmm.
And so I just doubled that and went with twenty-five million. That was the original number we had in here. I think at the last meeting, we talked about just doing debt service on it. And so six years worth of debt service on the twenty-five million comes out to about nine million.
Gotcha.
So that's how we got to that.
And speaking of that real quick, not to get too far off the subject, how far away is the proposed plans or concept of plan?
I think we can get the space needs study updated probably in the next month. And then, and then Bob will have that to go forth and do his revised plan. So.
All right. I know we started talking about that in January. That's why I asked.
And our, our level one projects that we discussed with the city being the courthouse, the two parks, sidewalks, and the road pavement was ones we identified on that list. And so we used the nine million dollar number as a project number instead of the twenty-something million. So, because if we did, even with them, with eighteen percent of twenty million, it starts getting heavily weighted on their payback side. So even though the parks, the sidewalks, and the, and the road pavement is heavily weighted to the city, the road pavement and the courthouse is heavily weighted to the county as far as lawns, I guess you'd call it. And so that's where it kind of evened out on the, keeping the split the same and the agreement of, of that amount, the nine million, of, of the total amount that the city takes in as a level one.
Gotcha.
So that, that's why on mine, I pulled it out of this one as a priority level.
So those mentioned with the city that we're not putting them in, we're already designating them as the top priority.
That's right.
And then ten, uh, one through ten would be anything that we haven't discussed with the city. So I can take courthouse because it's already on a priority list.
So I guess the easiest way for me to describe it is on twenty, I think it was twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty, or twenty-two and twenty-three. And what else did I have in there? Was that the two water projects and?
Let's see. And so the combination thing.
That was it, two, twenty-two and twenty-three. So it was five and a half million, right? Somebody's phone buzzing. That's why I put on the Jason desk. Last two. Twenty-two and twenty-three.
If you add up the four H renovation and lighting improvements out here, civic center roof, civic center drainage.
Two point four.
Oh, four, yes. Document digit addition.
So, so, but we still saved out of the five and a half doing debt service on that one, right, two, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So after I'd done my priority level on them, twenty-two and twenty-three, both big water projects, we already have one, some debt service on water projects now. So if we took that four million and one point five million, five and a half million, and did, and did debt service on it only instead of paying for the projects upfront, it came to one point nine million, I think, right at two million. So that left us three and a half dollars out of it instead of debt service. And that would get us pretty much, and this is just my priority levels, that would get us everything on the list if we take out courthouse and industrial park projects that are already accounted for. It would get us everything else on the list except for any major constructions, which I didn't have on there, was the new purchasing warehouse building, the new headquarters, fire station headquarters, a new recreation center, and new.
The one.
So you're, you're saying debt service, you're going to get all of these projects then?
With debt service doing the two water projects, twenty-two and twenty-three. And so the leftover, out of the eleven million we have leftover, we'll do all these other projects paid for now out of the Splosh, not debt service. Debt service only on the two water projects and courthouse, of course, because courthouse is separate.
So taking out five, fourteen million. And you took out the two water projects, right?
Well, debt service on them only. That was the, that was the two million. So instead of being five and a half million for those two, it'd be, those two, twenty-two and twenty-three would be two million.
They took out the headquarters, you took out the purchasing building?
Yeah, I took out one. I took out the ten.
Okay, I got that.
Twelve.
Got that.
Is that down there, too? I guess I can pull my email.
What about the parking lot, eighteen recreation complex? Because that's a major construction project.
That was number one on mine.
Mine, too.
List. So it's, yeah, it's in there.
Okay, it's in there. And there's some there.
So.
Won't cost quite what its price tag is.
Yeah, so the other one I had out was the water. So I had no purchasing warehouse, which is one, no fire department, headquarters, ten, no parks and rec, which is thirteen, and then no twenty-one office for water.
You mean number twelve?
And share.
You took number twelve out. You left thirteen, that's the, that's the parking lot, don't take, take?
Yeah, twelve.
Okay.
So taking out one, ten, twelve, and twenty-one, combining twenty-two and twenty-three for debt service only.
Okay.
And taking out nineteen, which is courthouse, and taking off.
Showman Authority, number nine.
Number nine, industrial authority, because those are covered under.
The current.
Current Splosh and debt service of the new Splosh. So that leaves us.
Enough to do the rest of everything else.
Everything else other than those within, and Jason's checked on my numbers, but I knew it was within a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Right. Because within like a billion on what I had, and I, I, I pretty much took out the exact same ones. I think I was at, but I didn't, the water was my thing. I didn't get the water improvements. Like, dear Ron, I knew we needed them, but I had like a question on, on those.
Yeah. And, and the good part about those, I think, is now that we've already done some debt service on those, on some projects like that, then we have an opportunity to pay some of the debt service with East Splosh. I mean, East Splosh, I got to get that out of my head.
Oh, God.
I'm working on that one, too. With Splosh, and then we still have the water construction account. If we're making, if we're pulling more water out of the ground and we're serving more residents, we're hopefully selling more water.
Agreed. And speaking of water, well sewer, Brandon told me that that sewer pipe coming up New Clinton Road was ours. That was the industrial park connection.
Go ahead.
When, when the lady came up from Flora Wyche, the sewer that was coming up, New Clinton Road, was ours. That was going to be a connection to the industrial park.
Yeah. Does it have any connect, so that other neighborhood is connected to it or it has no connection?
Yeah.
That's a forced main then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He told me it was like a million and a half to go down to the neighborhood. Eight homes.
Yeah. Well, the problem is we don't, I mean, we don't have sewer right now.
Yep.
To anybody else in the county unless we're buying it from the Macon Water Authority.
Right.
Yep.
That would be the next, get in the sewer business, you know. It's coming. It's going to have to.
Yeah, we got to have it.
So, and, and I hate that I missed that meeting. So a couple of things. Bradley Way Side Water and Sewer, I know we talked about failing septic systems over there and gray water years ago, even last year. Of course, some of my folks are having sewer issues. Ruby Drive, and there are a number of failures in that area, which leads into the McCrery Drive area. And I'm not, I wasn't as sure as to where the industrial park was going because I remember we talked about it going to Platoon and some other places. I wasn't sure. And then I got dirt roads that wasn't included on the, in the, in the assessment, thank you, that I need attention to. And so when I look at this, I, I think the projects are great. I just don't have anything to, to support some of the, the high needs in, in the area. This is a great county list, but it's exclusive of my district. And so I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing those parts.
You know, Daylon, you mentioned about the dirt roads, and we're all blessed with dirt roads. I think we know the need there, but we're going to have to educate the public and do a much better groups. We're going to have to educate the public the next T-Splosh so we can get it passed. Because if we go to Macon or Millidgeville or any county around, we're supporting theirs.
See, I can't count on T-Splosh.
No, you can't count on it. We've got it promoted, so it does best.
But you know, it, again, with the exception of my district that's been coming up complaining, nobody else really has said, hey, I'm having these issues. And she's been dealing with that. Mountain Springs Road has been dealing with that for a while. And the squeaky wheel has gotten louder and louder and louder. And we patched and delayed patches. So, you know, I'm just saying, there should be an allocation in, in here if we're not doing it in the budget for road repair outside of that, the regular roads that were assessed because dirt roads weren't assessed, and we don't account for them. Because, you know, most people that moved on dirt roads moved out there for a reason. But when they're having problems, we have to figure out solutions, and it's not just scraping the road. So I'm, I'm, I would be asking for an allocation for those roads. And if y'all don't want to include it on the list, that's okay. But I'm just making it known that this list does not have anything to do with District Four.
I think, you know, when we get to the budget cycle, you know, one thing I'll be mentioning to Jerry is I want to make sure our motor grader operators are educated, have gone to school, know how to effectively use every tool on that motor grader to properly maintain that road. Because if I've got a road that's flat graded, and I've got water running down the middle, and it's essentially ditches, could be filled with grass, or they're higher than the middle of the road, I got a problem. That road's got to have a crown. The ditches have got to be pulled at the proper times of the year. They've got to know how to run the skyfire tee, break up those holes.
Yep.
Where the holes don't, they can't put powder back in the holes. So I mean, it's, it's going to come down to a day-to-day operation for that department to maintain our dirt roads till we can afford to pave more dirt roads. And now it's a, it's a hard pill to swallow, but right now the money's not there.
Do we have a, a price for a fix at Mountain Springs?
No. Because when John was here, he gave a, a price for kind of patching it, but because that road has some base issues that went beyond scraping. So, and they never did an assessment. I know she was doing the legwork of getting, you know, the eighty percent to, to get the right of ways, but, you know, no true assessment was done on that road. So.
I know that they, there was a lot of work done on Pitts Chapel years ago, widening it for something. But it is back to being an arrow road, too, that feeds into Mountain Springs.
I don't think it's a separate conversation at all, because I do think, and we're not talking about every dirt road, but some of our main thoroughfare dirt roads that we've heard about need some real attention. And I, I would agree that we need to, we need to put aside some money because we have L-MIG that we're doing paved roads, and we even matched some funds with that to do paved roads, patching and, and repaving. And we got a, finally, in my opinion, got a pretty good roads list, a pretty good place of rating on, on all of them. But, yeah, we got to, we got to figure out that part of it that we're not, not really getting. Because I think every district has some pa, some dirt roads in them that are, if they're not on the roads to be paved list, and, and they got major problems, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a funding source for that.
Right. And, you know, I, I liked Hawkins for, for this part. He said, you know, we tried to pave a mile of road in every neighborhood, you know, or in every district. And that's something I think we moved away from, not only because of the cost, right? It's different. But that has to be something that we do because we know that if we don't do it, the roads just degrade over time, and they get worse. And that's why we got more roads on the list. I'd love to see at least a million allocated for dirt road improvements and maintenance, and make that either a part of the Splosh or part of the general fund because we have it and not neglect, you know, you won't pay it now, but you'll pay it later if you do nothing. So I'd love to see that here. And, and I'd like to see, you know, something for neighborhoods. But if you guys have already worked out the numbers, I'm not going to push the issue. Just in the budget cycle, you got to have it.
You and I had a conversation about the paving. You know, back in the day, they used, every district would get a mile.
That's what I just said.
But, yeah, that's what I'm allowed. You and I, I think you and I talked about it, Jason, that the problem we got now is what we could, they used to could do back in that day.
A mile.
A mile. Well, it's not just that. It used to be, and I can show you ones like in Bradley. There's a, a road there in Bradley I used to live in. All they had to do is crown it, no grade work, and they paved it. We can't do that today because I don't think the state allows to do it. You got to go full blown where back in those days, you could take a good dirt road, like you could take McKay Road now, back in the day, without grade work, just grade it, compact it, and pave it. That's it. State didn't involve. But now with the state being involved, you, you, you don't get that luxury anymore.
And I, I'll push back a little bit, Chairman, on there's a reason why.
Yeah.
They don't allow it that way because look at some of the roads we got.
That's it.
Pay for that we got. And I would, I'm a firm believer, do it one time, do it right.
Right. I agree.
Because if not, people think, well, we think, well, you just got your road paved six years ago. It's a long time before you need another one. And then they're thinking, I don't know what y'all paved this with, but it hadn't been but six years, and it's falling apart. And that'll be another twenty years before I get it paved again. And I don't, personally, I don't like the idea of doing one mile per, per district.
Because then you get one mile in the middle of nowhere that's got dirt roads surrounding every bit of it.
That, and I think we, if we're going to allot one mile per district, then let's allot five miles, and the five miles goes to the highest need. I don't care if they're all in, in Daylon's district. If, if, if his highest need, based on the independent assessment, the problem is if we're not doing assessments or we're not getting them, you know, assessed, then, you know, that, that's a problem. But if, if my road's number twen, if my district are number twelve on the list, and I get a mile, well, then my number twelve road just got jumped ahead of Daylon's number two road.
And Sam, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I love it. But the reason why District Four had the most roads on the list because they've been neglected. All it takes is three votes, and this one is a priority. And, and, and so they've been leapfrogged, and almost the first hundred roads are almost all in District Four. And then there's conversation about, oh, maybe we need to revisit the list. Well, no. I like the list. We need to have it. But this is Splosh money, so this is extra. That's the way I look at it. I'd rather do capital improvement projects, right? The, the heavy lifting, the courthouse, and, and things of that nature. But for project specific stuff that we may not normally allocate for, and, and the Splosh can go up and down, hey, here's what you have for dirt roads, and, and we just allocate it. It would be nice to do a mile in each district. Because literally, I don't know what other districts look like in terms of their roads, right, other than the roads list. And literally, your constituents can't see what you do, right? And our original role was commissioner of roads and bridges. That's what we did. And we not only have gotten away from that because of the other additional duties we have, but then we make that a backdoor, a backseat to all the other things. And we have to pave roads. That's why we got six hundred roads on the list that need paving. But, you know, if y'all want to allocate that for the, the regular budget, I'm okay. Just know that that's going to be important. Because T-Splosh didn't pass, may not pass. We know we're not going to have it on this ballot. So it's going to be further down the road. And we're only going to be able to do how much is, how many roads we got on the list? I mean, how many roads we did? We did ten roads this year, right?
Ten, and then it's, it's basically fifteen, hopefully, with twenty-four regular, twenty-four supplemental, and twenty-five regular, twenty-five supplemental. So really, four allocations of money would be able to do fifteen roads, hopefully.
Yeah, out of six hundred. All right. Moving on.
So this, this gets everything except the major construction. Can we, and I can't remember what you said. You based this off of our current revenue percentages.
The, so I did the, in terms of the revenue projection, I, I took the, our existing revenue, and I added a, like a CPI increase each year. So I did it out two years because the collections here would start at twenty-seven, and then I added the, what is it, two point five or two point nine percent per year as an escalator.
I don't know where, so ask you a silly, a silly question you might not be able to guess. Do you project that as a conservative projection? Or do you, do you think we, we could potentially get more than that, but you don't feel like we'll get less than that?
I think it's, I think it's probably somewhere in between. I mean, I, so this year.
That would be dead on.
Yeah.
You're pretty good there, Jason. Best answer yet. I think I'm exactly right.
So this time has been unusual in the sense that we had COVID, and so spending habits changed. And then about the same time, there was a state law change that went into effect where we started collecting sales taxes on a lot of new things.
Yeah.
And so that really, between the two, it really drove the revenue up. And so it, it's remained consistent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're going back to pre-COVID times. I don't think we're going back to COVID times. I think we're going to where we are. I think we've bubbled and then we've leveled out. And I think we're gonna, right now, what the increases we're gonna probably see is growth, which we hope we're gonna have and not necessarily growth in people because, you know, a lot of people don't wanna grow. They wanna, they wanna keep the county as rural as it is. But, I mean, growth as far as businesses and, and, and taxes go, as far as, as sales tax goes, so the more things we sell. So, I agree with, with Daylon's sentiments on needing to plan for, for the future needs of the roads that we don't plan for and dirt roads. I mean, I'd be fine with anything over, because this dollar is out to just what the projections are. So if we say now, anything over those projections goes into that funding for, for roads. And then um, definitely, uh, look at that during, during the, uh, regular budget.
Really, the two ma, two major road paging prob, projects actually came from the school board. And I think, Ms. Vaughn, you, you give us those numbers for the future school expansion if it, uh, they were to go out that direction, which would be McKay and, and Cheha. But outside of that, uh.
Loop Smith Skinner Road, they're, they're always, Seattle is asking me my top five and I always told them McKay, Cheha, Loop Smith, Skinner Road, and I cannot for the life of me think of the fifth road.
Sounds like you should've told them Mount Springs Church Road right now.
But all, all those have been handed to us, what, seven, eight years ago when we first started inquiry where we needed to be. And, uh, last thing I want it to happen is schools, the, the, the say they announce they're getting ready to go out, uh, Howard Roberts Road, building a new school. Well, one of those roads in, in mine, we're gonna have to have none because they're, they're gonna lean on it and that's Cheha. And then McKay, I think it, it ties into, it ties over there too. It's a, it's a missing link.
Between eighteen and Upper River.
Upper River. So, um, that's why getting that information, information years ago. And I mean, it could be. I mean, you never, I mean, with Board of Education, that could be on their back burner. That'd be, because, you know, the school system's growing and that, that could be the next chuffing block for a school.
There, um, because it's Splotch, I think we have the ability to generically say roads, right, and put a number on it. A nominal figure that makes sense, whether it's a hundred thousand, a half million, whatever. Same thing with CDBG, right? Because we know we get projects that come up that ask for a match, you know, CDBG projects. And that generically allows us to fund those accounts through the Splotched and it creates a placeholder. Same thing with sewer. I think we need to bullet item those on the Splotched so that language is there we can collect for it. Because if we have great years, great, you know, we know that sometimes funds in the, the previous Splotch, right, we, we accumulated more than we asked for, but it's nice to have a placeholder for it. And if we have a placeholder, we can leverage those funds to fund, you know, other projects. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't use it generically, right? Because if you know, or you, you're hearing a rumor about it, twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty-three seems like a long way away, but it's not. It's around the corner. If you put that in there for roads and Cheha comes up and Cheha really is three hundred and eighty-seven, well, you got funds, some funds for it. And, um, you can leverage it. And you may be able to combine it because you bulletized roads generically in CDBG and CDBG can be used for roads, even though that neighborhood may not qualify, but. So just a suggestion.
If I could just kind of piggyback off of what Commissioner Martin was saying. And, and I think you said this exact thing, but I was just gonna mention it again. I think there's a lot of value in having those categories specified on there, even if you just put twenty-five or fifty thousand in there because sort of the, the, the legal requirement, i- if you have excess collections, you can spend it on a project that you identified. And, and so as long as you have that, uh, exactly to your point, as long as you have that on that list, you can go back and put money towards it. That's why, um, we're able to go back and, and put money towards these things from the previous Splotch that we talked about because it was on that list. And so, uh, even, even if it's just some fairly nominal amount, it, it definitely would hurt to have those on there.
Splotch your feet.
I think I gotta go find my cable. I thought I had plenty of battery in there.
We can't. We don't have a signal. So I think we identify those, uh, those project categories, identify them in here and put up, like I said, put a dol, a nominal dollar amount to them. I was hoping we would, we would know if I'm just going, my, my numbers, I was, I was not going down to the penny. I was going one point two or one point four. So I was just getting rough estimates. Going off eleven billion. So I, I think we're pretty close with maybe a couple of hundred thousand here and there. And if we're a hundred, two hundred thousand to the good, then we put two categories of a hundred thousand or four or fifty thousand and we, we can do it.
He's going to get us a power call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there, you know, and if we, if we need small, I mean, there are some that we have. So I, I didn't mention this earlier, but I think the fire department and the sheriff's department that I had, that had vehicles, to make the numbers work, I think I had, I'm just using rough numbers. You know, two and a half million of the two point eight that they were asking for fire, fire trucks and two and a half of the three million they were asking for sheriff's cars. Cause they, they got us, you know, maybe not ten a year, but eighty a year or something like that. And it may not have got us, you know, seven of the apparatuses over twenty, but if you got seven twenty years older now and next year you got six that are new.
Just, oh, go ahead.
With that.
The elections office and the four H, um, combined at seven hundred thousand. And if in the courthouse, we create space for elections, different separate entrance, four H, you know, whether they stay here or they go someplace else, seven hundred thousand is a lot of money in new construction.
New spaces.
Yeah, in new spaces. That's almost a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I think I could get a lot, you know, in terms of if we, if we were building out that courthouse that had space. I'm trying to remember where I was. Casa had me some bunch of places. I don't know if it was Morgan County or some other place. But their courthouse had commercial space in the bottom of it, which was really cool. It wasn't Morgan, but it had commercial space in the bottom. And I was like, whoa, you know, what a novel idea. You're generating revenue. You've created space for people to, to meet, gather, et cetera. Um, and of course, there's revenue generating for, and I asked why they did that and they were like, oh, we're subsidizing any repairs and everything else out of it. I was like, ingenious. I don't know how that flies here in, in Gray, but, um, it, it is a novel idea to where the employees can go someplace and sit down and have lunch as opposed to being at their desk or maybe in the break room if there's that thing in the plan. But we create enough space with the, the amount of dollars allocated to do that. Is the revenue for elections going to be spent when that project reached a total amount? Because I know we can do it because at the moment we started collecting Splotch. And the same thing with four H, or is it gonna be down the road?
Yeah, I don't hear that from that.
The, the renovation, uh, for the elections office and four H, is that down the road or is it not gonna be, you know, from the moment that it's approved? Um, because I know we can start a project based on that.
Yes. So we could, so that's another thing to, to think about. Not, uh, all those projects were, uh, bond. So if, you know, if you, if you include, um, bonding capacity, which I would recommend, whether you wanna do it or not, or if you're, if you've got any inkling that you wanna do it, I would include it. As soon as this is approved, you can go to the bond market and, and get those funds. So, so in, in that sense, yes, you could. I mean, there's probably some time to develop plans and, and that type of thing. But yes, you, you can have the funds available so you can get right to work on it.
Gotcha.
Cause there's offices in, uh, Jason made comment earlier this, uh, this morning, but there's gonna be a lot of space here. It's gonna be available. Then it's gonna move to the courthouse. So, um, we'll have, we'll have some options where to, to, you know, to move four H or whatever we're gonna do.
Gotcha. Okay. I was just curious.
I know you're talking about my old building here, but, you know, it's still, it's still a goo, she's still a good one.
Still serviceable.
Yep.
A place to veins and a heart.
Twenty million dollars.
Liver.
So we need to make a motion on approving the list at this time, or do we need to?
So I think, did y'all change anything while I was calling?
We changed a lot. Don't let them lie to you up there.
So, yeah, so what you could do is, is you could, uh, make a motion to, to include those projects in the intergovernmental agreement in Splotch referendum. Then what I have to do is take that list of projects, get the city's list, take it to the attorney, get him to work it into the intergovernmental agreement. And probably next week, uh, that'll be ready for y'all to formally approve all those documents.
Question on the level one projects in the same project list that we do in the referendum. So they're voting on them. They're not itemized out, I know, but you just, when you, when you build a referendum, the verbiage in there will, will say city and county level one projects, their project and our projects, or will we separate them out?
Let me talk to the bond attorney about that and see. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how to do that. You had, you have a preference on? I don't know if anybody would pay any attention to it or not, but, uh, you thinking more about how it's, how it's viewed by the public when they look at the ballot or?
Yeah, or if you have to label them as city projects, because some are gonna be level one projects that are both of ours. And then some are, like when we start talking about the recreation complex, you know, paving a parking lot. That would be, uh, i- as, as generic as it is, it would still be a project that would be identified by the voter as a recreation project. And if in the, uh, and service delivery is, we take care of all of them. If they have something that is downtown Gray, you know, on their list, it's gonna be identified as two different projects. So I just don't, I don't know if it's, like in, in mine, the referendum just lists out everything that we're gonna do. You know, as a generic project, build schools, pu, public safety, um, you know, technology that, you know, it's generic categories. And then our project list that we show to the public will have, I'm just using example, technology or safety and security, maybe AI-generated camera systems, open gate weapons detection systems, you know, uh, card swipe badge access, this kind of stuff for all of our facilities. Those are the project lists, but it's still just under safety and security heading.
Yeah.
Put ten or twelve in a referendum line.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that's typically how we've done it. There is a more specific project list laid out in those two documents, but the, the ballot language is, you know, simplified.
Cause if you, honestly, if you get, yeah, if you get them.
Too wordy.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if that had to legally be in the language for the referendum based on the bond attorneys. I know, I know for, for Geo bonds, you have to put what you're gonna use them for, but, uh, I think we, for that, you just put a dollar amount on it.
Yeah, then.
You vote up to an amount to, to bond.
That's right. And I think you can do maybe seventy-five percent of, of the estimated collections, something like that. And so, unless, unless there's any objection, I'll just have you draft it that way. No obligation. Certainly you can, you can do, do up to that amount or, or none at all or anything. While we're all here, uh, is everybody gonna be around next week? Can we get at least three to? Any days, better than other days?
I'm good on next week.
What time?
Afternoons.
Okay.
Oh, I was asking him afternoons. So.
Yeah, I think school will open houses or Monday and Tuesday, I think.
Correct. Is that not the best time?
Probably so. We could, we could do it one of those days. They run until six thirty. It's from four thirty to six thirty.
Wednesday? Thirty?
I'm good with that.
I'm good on Wednesday. I'm good all week.
Yeah.
Y'all wanna plan on Wednesday, six o'clock?
You got it. I'm sorry, I won't be here. My son is graduating.
Would Thursday work better for you?
He's not watching.
Would Thursday work better for you or you gonna be out of state?
Thursday is open house and bid.
Okay, I got you.
So you can do it. Just, you have my blessings.
Yeah, Wednesday's good for me.
As soon as I get those documents back from them, I'll circulate them just in case anybody has questions.
Jason, so we need a motion to enter into the governmental agreement?
I would just say, uh, a motion to include the projects, uh, as discussed by the board in the intergovernmental agreement.
And then the CDBG just, we're gonna do those as line, like CDBG road projects. I would like to throw one out there, rails to trails, because I know Vaughn is gonna do something with the rails to trails. So.
Say, if you just said infrastructure, you think it captures all that or?
I, I know that specifically, right? When we sat on mats, they wanted to see it, right? Cause I think in the mats, long-term forty-year plan years ago, when I sat there, rails to trails, and that was the making bid to Vaughn. Um, that had to be specified. Um, yeah.
For us to agree to it, not for the Splotch, right?
W- well, both, like, if we, at least if we put it in the budget on the Splotch, it says that we're interested, we're gonna do something. So the feds can say, yeah, you're doing something. All right, great. Um, but definitely.
Flip side of that, I know schools have to be very specific on theirs. I mean, they have to itemize out, but counties can be very generic. The problem, the flip side of that is if we say rails to trails and we identify a dollar amount and rails to trails don't happen in the next six years, we can't do anything with that money.
Right. And, uh, that's what I was gonna say, like when he mentioned like the, like CDBG, we can put a hundred K roads improvement, sewer, whatever, a hundred K. But rails to trail, rails to trails just listed. And if we allocate ten thousand, fifty thousand, so be it, but at least we have that as a bucket. And he can research it and let us know if we have to do.
Yeah, if it, if, uh, infrastructure or something like that would cover it. And then even if we need to do a letter of commitment, rails to trails saying commissioners have got money in the Splotch that we're willing to put toys at when it comes about. That could even be a letter to them saying we're, we're on board.
Yep.
And, and our, we legally identified the money that will be used for it.
And the good thing about that too, theoretically, rails, oh, no. I was thinking about Jake's Woods, right? If there was something that needed to be done in there, but rails to trails is specific.
All right. All right, who wants to take a stab at the motion?
I'll stand and have it.
You got it? We haven't had, nobody's made a formal motion.
What Jason said.
Everybody say it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I make the motion that Jason identified.
Second.
Second. All, all in favor? Uh, any against, oppose? I think we've had our discussion. Anything else, Mr. Rizner?
No, sir.
I make a motion to approve, I'm into it.
To approve.
Sure, it's been a really long day.
We got a second?
Second.
One second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I see two smiles back there.